All right, Commissioner, we are live.
Welcome back to our November 10th afternoon session. We did have the one o'clock that was postponed until next Monday. So sorry if anybody came for that one and we were not here. This is our 2:30 discussion and decision regarding the contract with McPaus. Who would like to open the discussion?
So according where we left it last time, we were having two different questions. One was donation, the other was contract. And Commissioner Caldwell was wanting a, what was it, billing by, billing by need? You know, his stuff came to you guys, animals, whatever, brought in to bill us as they showed up. And your question was a straightforward contract. Have you and your board talked about this anymore as to where you're at?
I have not. I left last discussion with the understanding that the commissioners were going to review their legal obligations regarding the Idaho State statutes around our contract. And then we would circle back today and then I would take whatever that decision was to my board.
And we did get a legal opinion. So there is some obligation. It does not state that we would have to run a shelter. If, if we did not have McPaus in place, it does state we would have to care for the animals in a humane way. So I think in the past, I'm not certain where they actually put them, but so it's kind of a gray murky area on what we would have to do. But we did get legal counsel to look into that for us. We thank them for that. Mr. Caldwell, did you have anything you want?
I definitely appreciate all that McPaus does and I understand that a contribution probably should be made. I just would really like to see it go through the grant program like we're asking all of the other pro, programs to, to keep things fair and, fair and equitable. However, I would like the sheriff to have access to McPaus as well. I, I hope we can work together in understanding that we know how important it is and we're willing to contribute some through the grant program, but that it seems like two different items. I don't know if, if we can move forward with that type of a program where the sheriff has a contract so that you can cover your, your liability and then you can invoice us for that. To have that service as well as the other part of it through our grant program that will be fully funded in the first part of February this year. We, we understand and I'll apologize that it's, it's a little later than we expected, but new, new programs take time. We're going to work very hard to make all of our decisions within January and then get the money distributed in February. Whereas next year it will be prior to the fiscal year. So we will be several months sooner than that.
Okay.
So I would just hope that we can each give each other some grace through this, through this change, but understand that we know the importance of McPaus.
Thanks for that. Yeah, I mean, obviously you guys, we've, we've had this contract for many years. We've been partners for many years. Our goal is to also find a way to move forward together as community partners. And the letter that I sent was just trying after the last meeting and prior to this meeting was to just try and provide a better landscape for where some of these asks are coming from. And I understand the want for things to be fair and equitable for all nonprofits against the county. And I guess my only counter to that thought process as a whole regarding McPaus would be, to my knowledge, we are the only nonprofit that is providing services that are Idaho State statute required. So that is why I believe at least for the contract part, we do fall outside of other nonprofit grant recipient, that bucket.
And I think for, for me, if I was in the position of, like our sheriff's department is, and as a county commissioner, I'd want to, I want to fix contract number from you folks. You know, because you already have history of, you know, usage by our sheriff's department with you guys. I'd want that piece to be a, a separate contract fixed from you, from you folks. That you know what to expect, we know what to expect. And then the other piece that Commissioner Caldwell was talking about is, has to do with the grant process that we deal with.
Sure.
So when you're saying a fixed contract, what I'm hearing you say is we're predetermined amount, the sheriff will have access.
Yes.
So what my thought was, we do do something like that, but we, we set a minimum like 10,000 under a fixed amount. And then the rest of it would be per program, you know, what they would come to us for a grant request for the rest of that with the program being designed and an outline.
And I think a, a contract fixes it in their perspective and in our sheriff's department's perspective. That hey, we've got this contract with McPaus and we can do business.
So I guess if, if I can speak to it more really fast, can you hear me all right?
Hold on one second. Our prosecuting attorney was making a point, so.
So do you want, do you want those in separate agreements? Or do you want that just one agreement and have the law enforcement component called out in a separate section from the other contribution that the county is going to make towards McPaus?
Well, since it's, okay, that's a question for Sheri. I mean, is it since we're coming out of the, the grant program? Do we need to have this in two sections?
I think we do because one's going to be a line item, would be an annual contribution to fulfill the MLU. And then I don't know exactly what the MLUs are going to look like coming out of the grant program, but the expectations would be there. To me, that's more of a grant request. I don't know what those MLUs will look like.
Almost seems like these would fit better in separate agreements.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Steve.
Just wanted to clarify, I think there's, there's a, there's an avenue to do both. I just want to make sure we understand what you're wanting to accomplish so we can, can get it done.
Yep.
Okay.
Last year we inter, we contributed 25,000?
Yes, but it was all one piece and was kind of integrated. Now we're asking for a structured piece for contract.
Right.
And another piece would just through the grant program. So we're just kind of splitting it up. So we're doing. So you, are you good with that to take to your board?
Well, I, I just wanted to bring up one more, one more thing that I think isn't quite being accounted for in this discussion. And it's that the, the point of this contract historically and with other jurisdictions across Idaho is that it's not just allowing access to the facility, it's also helping support the intake of strays that the public brings us. So we've worked really hard over the last multiple years that the public bring us stray animals that are in the county's jurisdiction. So this year alone, we've had 60 stray animals brought to us by the public. And so without us, those strays would fall under that Idaho State statute of animals at large, at least a portion of them. Some of those are cats, so that's not 100% of that 60, but the, the idea behind this contract is not only that sheriffs have access to the facility, but also to help recognize the services we're providing to the county that the public brings to us. Because again, if, if we weren't here, those public would be bringing the strays to the county directly rather than to us. So I just wanted, I just, that is another piece of this contract that we are helping cover. It's not strictly the sheriff's access to our facility.
And that's.
Well, I agree with that, Courtney. It's, I think what we're trying to do is establish some type of a baseline in recognition of that. And the $10,000 is far beyond what it would be if we were being charged per animal that you held in your, so there is, there is an acknowledgement of that by the amount that we're contributing. So I don't, I don't know what that breaks down per animal, but that is because of the grant. The way that we are going to envision this grant program, it is for that type of interaction. As a nonprofit, you are supporting the community in this way. And that's why that is a perfect avenue, you know, to, to make that statement in your grant application of how you're going to use those funds. That supports overall community health and that would be one of them. So I, I think in setting a minimum dollar amount, we are meeting the obligation for whatever stray animals come into the, the complex and allowing the sheriff in there, you know, the three or four that we normally do a year. So I think if we're just looking at it per animal basis, that 10,000 covers what you're talking about even. But I do think that there is an opportunity to make that pitch and that statement in the grant process.
What are you thinking? Now that, like that 60 animals that she's talking about, the strays that come in, you know, either they're coming into the department or they're, people are just taking them to McPaus. So we're going to put that into the same contract amount that sheriff would be dealing with?
I don't think we have to call out a specific number because it's, that changes every year.
Well, I know historically, I'm just going off of years that they, they do and it's, it changes all the time. But do we want that piece fixed into that contract amount and then the grant pieces over and above? I'm just trying to get what's going to be in the contract defined.
I think that is just for the services provided to the community and access to the sheriff. And if I look for 60 animals, we just got a $150 bill, 60 animals, I mean, that's $9,000 a year. So that, that basically covers that and increases as we move forward. And then, you know, the opportunity is there to have that conversation with the grant committee. That they provide in excess of that, you know, for the community, for all the other services that are out there.
Can I ask our legal team another question? So in the overview, it states about animals being seized specifically from law enforcement officers. What about strays? Does Idaho code directly talk about strays and the county's responsibility?
Yeah, it does talk specifically about animals being at large and it, it makes it illegal for animals to be at large. It doesn't impose an obligation on the county to provide a shelter for strays. Just, it just criminalizes dogs being at large. So in the absence of a shelter for strays to go to, that probably increases your incidence of animals running at large. So I guess you can think of it that way, but I think our memo laid out the, the statutory requirements for providing an animal shelter, just that there isn't that obligation or that mandate in, in Idaho code. But a lot of counties do provide that just to minimize the, the incidence of law enforcement being called out or other impacts on, on the county, so.
And that's, that's what I'd want to be added in too, along with the history of, of what the sheriff's department uses McPaus facility for in the contract.
Right.
I'd want those two pieces in there and whatever that number is, you know, we'll deal with that in contract and then.
You know, I'm just, I'm just talking from my own personal experience. I mean, animals get surrendered for a lot of different reasons. And, and some of them are just, you know, citizens that see animals run at large, not having any idea who, who owns, owns the dog or cat or whatever the situation is and making sure they want to get it to a place that they're going to be taken care of. So that doesn't necessarily involve law enforcement, but oftentimes it does. So I think you need to take that into consideration as you're deciding what, what you are wanting to do. But as far as, as far as what Idaho law requires you to do, if there was no animal shelter in animal, in Valley County, there would not be a legal obligation for you to stand one up. So keep that in mind as the, as the backdrop.
Yep, okay.
So knowing that we're a little late on this grant program, how would everyone feel that if we just took the same amount as last year out of the grant program? The one-time early payment, as a one-time payment next year, it has to, we would like to see it go through the grant program, which will be on time for this contract to not have expired. What if we just?
Pay the 25,000? I'm fine with that.
Out of the same program?
Yeah, so our grant funding would just decrease to 175, knowing that the majority of this issue is because of the timing. And I think, I think we have ground to stand on to not increase based off the numbers are, have been decreasing over the last several years.
You know, I'd be okay with that. I'd still like to see McPaus bring back numbers.
Oh, for sure.
See what we could use for a contract down the road.
They will have to do the same requirements as before, come back and give updates.
Next year anyhow.
And she did send us numbers, so we do have those.
Yeah, I sent them back in June and then I sent like a recent one as well for year to date.
Right.
Yeah.
And basically it's, it's what your board would hand us and say, okay, this is how we feel a contract number should add up. And then whatever the grant program is on top of that. Follow what I'm saying there?
I'm not quite following what you're saying.
Well, you'd have, you'd basically have a contract, which would, you know, cover the strays that come into the, into McPaus that normally the county would have to pick up and bring to you, but you know, private citizens would bring them to you. And then you also have what the sheriff's department brings to you. So those are fixed, kind of fixed numbers that fluctuate every year. But that's the number we'd like to see to apply to a contract with McPaus.
That's not what we're talking about for this year.
No, that's not what we're talking about this year.
This year.
That'd be for next year.
25,000 contribution out of the grant program as a, a one-time thing outside of the grant.
So for next year, we would have that fixed contract amount that you guys present to us. And then, and then the grant piece would be over and above, that has to do with a whole different process.
Okay, I, I'm going to paraphrase just to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. So next cycle, you'd like to see the num, kind of like a percentage-based, average-based purely for law enforcement and stray animals?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I can do that.
Right, good.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we contribute $25,000 to the contract with McPaus out of the fiscal year 2026 grant program.
Second it?
I moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
So we will update the existing contract then that we have with them to the 25,000 for the next year. And then following that, there will be a separate contract, one for hard costs incurred. And then the other one would be for the support of the program through the grant program. Uh, just making sure our prosecuting attorney's office understands what we just said.
So Courtney, with that action, will the sheriff's office have the ability to use your facility again?
Yeah, as soon as we've get, we get everything signed and we're up to date, then yes, we will, we will open that access back up.
Ryan, I think you guys have the old contract? Okay.
Uh, we have the one that ended back in September of '25, so we don't have anything for the next year.
Okay, our prosecuting attorney's office does have it, so we will update that with the new dates on it and get it over for signature.
Perfect. As soon as I have it, I will get it back to you as soon as I am able.
All right, great. Thank you, Courtney.
Thanks, commissioners. Appreciate your time. Bye.
All right, Harrison, if you will hold us now, mute us until 3 o'clock? Hey, Harrison, if you will hold us now. Mutis until three o'clock?